The Texas Government Code to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property.
Move into executive?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to this Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this nation that we're blessed to be a part of. We thank you for our responsibilities as citizens, that we participate in our government. And we ask you to lead and guide our voters in this last hour of voting. Lead and guide our elections administrator, Remy Garza, and every single election worker for an honest, accurate, efficient counting of the votes. Lead and guide our mayor and commissioners here tonight and every presenter for the best for the city of Brownsville. And Lord, we give you all the glory in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Rick.
Action on Executive A, action on real property matters as discussed in executive session.
Mayor, I propose that we, that staff continues advising executive session?
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Mayor's activity update?
I just hope everybody voted, that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner's activity update?
Mayor, although the city hasn't taken a stance on the arrival of National Guard troops coming into the city, we do ask for patience and we do ask that, you know, the people allow the government the things that they need to be doing. Right now, I know that throughout border towns, throughout Texas, people are having a very difficult time with the fences that are being put up and all of these different issues that are going on right now with caravans coming towards the United States and all that. But what I do ask is that our citizens remain calm and have faith that our government is doing, is taking the necessary precautions to be able to ensure safety for everyone.
Yeah, and that brings up a good point, Commissioner. Thank you. I did attend a meeting with the Border Patrol in FAR yesterday. There are three different vans that are have been, that are being surveilled. However, the number of people that are processed through our ports of entry are somewhere between seven to eight hundred. There is no security concerns according to the Border and Customs Patrol or any crisis. The issue that's before us is just simply that nobody gets disorderly or does something that's requires any, any action on behalf of anybody. The Army is down here strictly not for law enforcement, but they have just some support groups from engineering, medical staff, et cetera. But please note that everybody is working really hard together. All the law enforcement people, we're also working with Mexico and Mexican authorities and law enforcement. The one thing that they pointed out was that the security at the Guatemala-Mexico border is a little different than what we have between the United States and, and Mexico. Much, much stronger and, and a lot more durable. And so, everything is gonna be fine. So just, we're gonna be good.
I have one quick update. I just want to remind everybody that if you have not voted, those of you at home, you have fifty-five minutes to get to the polls. So I never recommend anybody to turn off, especially me when I'm on TV, but turn the TV off and get to your polls anyways. And with that being said, somebody missed the public comment that is here from Valley Interfaith, and I would like to welcome you during my update to the podium. If you have anything to say, please, yeah, please step forward. Is it allowed? Is it okay, Mayor?
Counselor, I don't, let me tell you, I also like to welcome Valley Interfaith. I'm sure we all do. We do have a procedure, and I don't know Renee's gonna have to give us the, I mean, I'm, you know.
Mayor, if it's agreeable with the commission, it's, it could be permitted, Your Honor.
I, I.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please. If we can make sure this, it's just a short little three-minute ditty.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Martinez and City Commission. My name is Rosie Nojosa. I am a leader with Valley Interfaith in Saint Eugene de Mazanat Catholic Church. Tonight, I am here with the leaders from Brownsville who want to recognize and commend the tremendous work the City Commission and the G-BIC board members have done to ensure that we continue to invest in Brownsville's most prized asset, our community. On October twenty-second, the G-BIC board voted unanimously, right here in the City Hall, to invest the full amount of three-hundred-and-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars in VIDA, a true gem in the Valley's workforce development projects. This program has a proven track record of taking people from poverty and getting them into the middle class, of taking people who live on welfare and turning them into tax-paying contributors of society. With an average wage of over thirty-two thousand dollars per year for graduates and a retention rate of over ninety-three percent, this program has already received recognition from the Department of Health and Human Service as one of the strongest workforce development programs in the country. What gave me the most hope of all is that the G-BIC vote was unanimous. We thank you, Commission Tetra and Commissioner De Leon, for your leadership on G-BIC and the other board members, John Cowan and David Bedencourt. We also thank the rest of you commissioners and Mayor Martinez for your continued support of this vital economic development program. We look forward to working with you to create a bright future for all. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay. City manager's update?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the commission. Just want to give two brief updates. One of them is the Brownsville Fire Department will begin a pilot called the Mobile Integrated Healthcare Unit, starting this month. This is a proactive approach to assist residents that Chief Sheldon has worked on. It's currently being used in the cities of San Antonio and Dallas with some very promising results. The hospitals are on board. And really what this is, is to help residents with non-emergency situations by getting an experienced paramedic out to them instead of using the typical nine-one-one centers. It's a really good pilot project.
I would take my hat off to the project. I've already told Chief Sheldon it's a wonderful idea and urge you to interact and integrate the two FQHCs in the city so that they can help and assist and make it even more worthwhile.
Thank you. The second item, I just want to remind our members of the community and city commissioners, the city administrative offices will be closed on Monday, November twelfth, two thousand eighteen, in observance of Veterans Day. However, emergency police, fire, and rescue services may be reached by calling on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Very good. Presentation?
Next, we have the presentations. We have Employee of the Month, Ms. Laura Hernandez from the Human Resources Manager.
Mayor, Commissioners, we have Laura Hernandez, and I think so far the people who work with the search committee, Laura was the spearheading behind it. And so I thought this was a great opportunity for Employee of the Month and maybe for the months we've been doing this event. So I just wanted to recognize her for the Employee of the Month of what she did. And through her hard work and everything, she was appointed as the interim HR Director. I think she's gonna lead that department for the time being to ensure we have something, we come in with a new city manager comes in. So with that, she gets her plaque, she gets a watch. And I think this is the first time I'm doing this too, so. And then she, the actual pin is a Brownsville outstanding employee. We changed it up a little bit. So I'll leave it up to Laura, and I just want to appreciate that.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. I would just like to express my deepest gratitude, first of all, to Mr. Lopez, not only for his gracious words, but also for his outstanding leadership. It is a pleasure working alongside so many of our brilliant and dedicated employees, elected officials, and our community members that give so much of their time and effort towards the advancement of our great city. So thank you again.
And thank you, Laura. Appreciate it. Congratulations.
Next, we have consent agenda items A through I.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have our public hearings, public hearing number six, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number twenty-eighteen-nine-thirty-three-zero-zero to amend Article Four, Classification Plan Section eleven-seven-one-A, classes and positions of the code of ordinances of the city of Brownsville, Texas by establishing new classes, positions, and number of employees in the fire and police departments.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is really, as required by ordinance in the city charter, rather, a formality. As you may recall during budget, we had added three fire positions and two police positions, and this is to amend the charter to reflect those changes.
Okay, and anyone here on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion?
Go ahead.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Art.
Next, we have public hearing number seven. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number twenty-eighteen-sixteen-fifty-one, amending the code of ordinances, Chapter three forty, Townhouse Projects, by adding Section three forty-five appeals and dealing with related matters.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The Townhouse Projects Appeals Process, the Chapter three forty Townhouse Projects has not been updated since its creation in nineteen-seventy-one. We recently encountered a case where we did not have the appropriate path for an appeals process. So we have created one for them. Chapter, Section three forty-five appeals reads, "Any person aggrieved by the decision of an administrative official regarding Chapter three forty Townhouse Projects may appeal to the Board of Adjustment within thirty calendar days of the decision made." The Board of Adjustment, according to the American Plowing Association and the Local Government Code, may hear appeals from administrative officials for the following type of code provisions, such as zoning, international building code, international residential code, and other city requirements regarding land use and development regulations. Any questions?
Anyone here on this issue?
Motion to close public hearing, Mayor?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're gonna have to have. This is an action item, so I have to.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight, thank you.
Public hearing number eight, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five-twenty-eighteen-zero-forty-seven to rezone from professional office F to medium retail F for lots one and two, Block One, Landalex Professional Center, located at fifty-six East Price Road.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. This parcel is zero-point-six-zero-seven-six of an acre. It's currently zoned professional office, one CF. They're asking it to be rezoned to medium retail, three CF. The intended use is for a medical office. North of the property, there is civic institution, financial institutions, and medical facilities. West, there are apartments and commercial businesses. South, there are apartments and single-family. And to the east, there are, there's undeveloped land, single-family dwelling, and medical facilities. Here is the zoning map. Across from Price Road and adjacent to the property is zone medium retail, three C. Also to the east, it's going to be majority professional office. And to the west, along the intersection of Old Port Isabel Road and Price Road, there's going to be a mix of medium retail, and/or retail, and some apartment. There were sixteen mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends this rezoning from professional office F, one CF, to medium retail F, three CF, and this request is consistent with the Conference of Plan of Future Land Use Plan.
Anyone here on this issue?
Close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item?
Public hearing number nine, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number twenty-eighteen-eleven-hundred-point-sixty-one, amending the code of ordinances, Chapter three forty-four, Vegetation, Article Five, Landscape Irrigation Ordinance, Section three forty-four-three-fourteen, Fees and Dealing with Related Matters.
Once again, good evening. Back in August of this year, the commission passed a landscape irrigation ordinance that is required by law. At that meeting, I did let you all know that I'd be returning to get approval of the fees. The Pliant Development Services Department did a cost analysis, and we have come up with the fees for this ordinance.
We can't hear you very well. Can you get closer to them?
The proposed fee schedule for new installations is seventy dollars. Major repairs, forty-five, and the removal of irrigation systems, forty-five dollars. Are there any questions?
This is like for a house that would be tapping into?
Into city water.
A risaka?
No, although the risaka, if, if, even if a property is connected to the risaka, somewhere along that line, there must be a rick-or-back-flow cross-connection system. So it does need to be regulated. I've heard of stories where people who are connected to a risaka, maybe somebody comes in and they do some work. Later on, they realize that they've been brushing their teeth and washing their, themselves with risaka water because there was some kind of a bad connection through there. So the regulation would be for both commercial and residential properties that are connected to a risaka or to city water.
Wow.
That's not a bad price. I mean, considering what it is, I thought it would probably end up being something major, but that's reasonable.
Okay, anyone else here on this, on this issue? Not all entertain a motion?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have the public comment period. No one signed up for the public comment? Next is items for individual consideration. Action item number eleven, consideration action on resolution number twenty-eighteen-zero-fifty-two to appoint a reappointed board member to the Cameron Appreisal District Board of Directors.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is a, a request by Cameron Appreisal District. We currently have one director representing the city of Brownsville. He has expressed interest in remaining as the chairman, and that would be Mr. Vicente Mendez.
Would we reappoint Mr. Mendez?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have action item number twelve, consideration action to appoint one representative and one alternate to serve on the Amigos del Valle Board of Directors.
Honorable Member, this is actually an appointment for two city commissioners. One of them is vacant, left by Commissioner, Commissioner Mr. John Villarreal previously, and the other one was a resignation from Commissioner Nice.
Yeah, and this is one that is not always easy to, to fill. And, and my suggestion, unless someone wants to volunteer this evening?
I've done it before, and it's very hard for me.
Right, no, I, because of the distance and because of the way it's set up. My suggestion to the administration is to see if we can consider sending a part, some administrative officer, director or otherwise, of some department within the city. So if you all would take, take a look at that, and I don't think we're gonna do any action here because I don't think I'm gonna get any volunteers, okay?
Maybe.
Table?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
It's a very important board. Maybe we should, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, the thing about it is, for the public to know, is that all these commissioners, there are tons of things that are being asked of every one of us, and it's just part and parcel of the growth of, of the city. And I can tell you, I went around the room. There's Commissioner Nice will be going to Metamoros on some related issues. The, the new chancellor of the RGV's coming in, Texas Parks and Wildlife will be in tomorrow. And it goes on and on, and all of these guys are doing as much as they can. So we need to try to figure this out, and maybe we look at the city charter in that regard, okay?
Mayor, thank you.
Mayor, in the meantime, we'll go ahead and send a city representative for the meetings.
If, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item number thirteen?
Do we have a first and second to table the item?
Yes, it was me and Rick.
Okay. Next, we have action item number thirteen, consideration action to appoint one member to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Committee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. Real quick, we have, this is to replace our chair, Dylan Vanderford, who is subject to the previous rule that was voted on. And so, we have just a quick recap of what our current member appraisal is. Is, we have one member from District One, one member from District Two, two members from District Three, and two members from District Four. And then of the applicants, we only, we have three from District Two and three from District Four. And then the applicants are as follows. We had six applicants apply who expressed interest, and they are listed on the slate below you.
I wish I could see it.
Okay, let me see. So it's Afilia Garza from District Four, Orlando Garza Junior from residing District Two, Oscar Cruz from District Two, and Miguel Guyton from District Four, Andrea Torres from District Four, and then, I believe it was a Mr. Linehart, Linehart from District Two. And then they did, I don't know, can you see that any better? They did, these were kind of the highlights of why they wanted to be a member. So, "Afulia is an avid user of the Stillman Dog Park, goes on a daily basis and would like to get more involved with this park, and realizes it's just one park that needs attention but willing to help in any way possible." "Mr. Orlando Garza Junior, District Two, is born and raised in Brownsville. I've had the opportunity to move out but has stayed because I love this city. I believe this is an amazing place to raise a family and has a lot to offer future generations. I want to be a part of making decisions in the community that will enhance our beautiful city and make it more prosperous." "Mr. Cruz says, 'After retiring from active duty in the U.S. Air Force, my desire has been to serve my community. In doing so, I went straight to law school in North Carolina, has since moved back to Brownsville and seen the needs of my community, and is my hope that my experience in the military and law school can serve my community.'" "Mr. Guyton, I have always had the need to help my community. I believe that is our responsibility as citizens of this great city to help improve our city and make a difference for those that come after us. I want to be able to help make decisions that will bring change and prosperity to our city and our community.'" And I believe this is our last one. Oh, two more. "Mr. Tor, Mrs. Torres, as a young local, I decided upon graduating I wanted to be more involved among my community. As a self-reckoned Brownsville native, I find myself always trying to find ways to network and find ways to help others and be ready to take a bigger step and be a part of something that can make a direct impact. I constantly visit our local parks, whether it be alone or with family and friends, and I feel my fresh new perspective can bring a new outlook as to how we can better those areas for our locals and tourism economy." And then the last one, Mr. Linehart. "I want to get back to my community. I am retired now, and I have the time to spend." So, and then hopefully that's a little bit, is that a little bit easier to read?
Yes, my poor eyes. I was already planning on saying for my Lasik.
Okay, so.
So you, you need one more mem, one more member, and District Three and District Four already have two apiece, and District One and District Two have one apiece. Is that correct?
District One has one, District Two has one, District Three has two, and District Four has two.
Okay.
I'll move to appoint Mr. Linehart, the retiree who has time to spend, to dedicate to our board.
And, and by the way, I wish you would send a thank you note to all of them. All those comments were wonderful.
Beautiful.
And, and tell them that we, we probably have other boards that, you know, please make applications to. The more people that are involved, the more people we enjoy having. This is your Brownsville, so thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Well, now we have to, we have an appointment.
Mr. Linehart?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a second?
I don't think we have a second.
You don't have a second? I think Rick seconded.
I like the mystery about his first name.
Was this created in your office or from Parks?
The PowerPoint?
The PowerPoint.
What, Parks?
Please be a little bit more sensitive.
Yes, sir.
I can't.
Yes.
Had a squint.
I love the format, though.
Next, we have action item number fourteen, consideration action to appoint members to the vacancies of the Brownsville Beautification Committee.
There was only one eligible applicant, and the applicant, Ms. Zavala was the only eligible applicant who applied.
So I just had one question. It's okay if you don't live in Brownsville? Because if I read it correctly, although I don't have my glasses, she does not live in Brownsville.
I believe she did, but no, my understanding is you need to live in Brownsville.
Or maybe I was, maybe I was reading.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it is SPI. You're right. No, I think it's employer. That's employer. Twenty-five-sixty Chozo Drive.
My apologies.
So, is, yes, a resident.
I would move to appoint her.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we have action item number fifteen, consideration action to appoint one alternate to the Board of Adjustment.
Good evening. We currently have one vacancy for an alternate member. By filling this position, we would fill our board completely. We had one applicant. Her name is Michelle Garcia.
Would you appoint Ms. Garcia?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Tell her she got appointed by acclimation. Okay.
Next, we have action item number sixteen, consideration action to authorize dates for the U.S. Customs and Border Protection reimbursable services program.
A couple of months ago, I want to say April, we started this process with USCBP on, well, we did a pilot program in Semana Santa. Then shortly after that, we started a process to have our own account and our own contract with USCBP so that we could possibly save a little bit of money without having to go through the county. So there's, there was some additional costs there during that pilot program. So we now have that agreement in place. And we are seeking your approval for the dates that we are using this program. So, once again, this program is to supplement USCBP officials and pay for extra lanes to be open on the bridge. And so, we've worked with USCBP on trying to get those peak demand times and obviously matching with what could be, you know, good times to come over and, you know, shop and whatnot. So upon the holiday season, we usually see a higher wait time at the bridge, and that's why these dates are here. So these are coordinated directly with CBP, and we ask for your approval today.
What did it cost us during the pilot?
So this is the cost. The twenty-eighteen pilot, we, we did, we did two-hundred-and-thirty-nine hours of overtime. That's how much the, the city paid for. And so, these, that's what we, that's what we paid, fourteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty on, for vehicle lanes at Gateway, and a hundred-and-twenty overtime hours for pedestrians at Gateway. The average is a hundred-and-twenty-four-sixty-five.
But the total was thirty thousand.
The total was thirty thou, twenty-nine, twenty, yes, thirty thousand.
Twenty-nine-seven.
So.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, I, we have stock, we own part of the Veterans Bridge, but the county does charge three-seventy-five now per car that's traveling into Mexico. And in return, that, of course, Mexico takes share of that, but I just, I don't see, I, I'm still, I go to Mexico once, twice a week, I know some of you also do, and I'm still doing two to three hours. Okay? I'm still, I'm still in line two to three hours, and I really, I think that we could focus our monies somewhere else and not on something like this. That's just my opinion.
Well, I, I was, I think we tried to put the pencil to this from an economic standpoint as to whether the sales are justified, that, that twenty-eight or twenty-nine thousand dollars. And I don't know what the result of that was. I also go whenever I can and, and have to, and the wait is terrible. I think it's one of those issues that we really need to address in the, in the coming months.
These are, these dates are not necessarily focused. I know that we own half of the Veterans Bridge, and so we might want to focus our efforts on veterans. Pedestrians, there's no pedestrians at Gateway, or at Veterans. So pedestrians, they, we get over a million pedestrians a year through Gateway. And so, the lines usually, I, in fact, I think this afternoon, or yesterday, there was a very long line almost to the pay booth at, in Matamoros. So that, so we're just asking for these, these approvals. We could lower the dates. We're, there, there's all kinds of flexibility here.
And the funding's coming from the Tomatoes Bridge funds that we get for that?
The Bridge Fund.
Which, which goes to the general fund?
It goes into the general fund?
Yes, all the money that the.
All the money that is collected from the Veterans Bridge, there's a transfer that is made to the general fund.
So you'd be using bridge funds to open up this bridge and make it quicker to get across, basically?
Okay. Any other discussion?
I would move to approve it.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Name.
Okay. It carries.
A book name. Just because I think 30,000 dollars is a lot of money.
Four ayes, okay, and two names. Okay. Thank you, Ramito. Kind of keep us posted, and, and if you all would monitor a little bit about, sort of like the...
Yeah, we, we got a report. I, I wanted to keep it brief. We, we got a report with all the, but...
Yeah, I know you do. That's what I'm saying, that if you could send us a memo with like, what I call the ROI, the return on your investment, that would be nice.
Next, we have action item number 17, consideration action on a memorandum of understanding amongst the city of Brownsville and Texas Department of Public Safety for the development of a tactical training facility.
So this is an item that started last, in, in the legislative session last year in January, and so we've been working with, closely with our legislative delegation and Texas Department of Public Safety and Police Department to bring this tactical training facility, MOU, together. Currently, there's $5 million that have been allocated for, for this project in the 84th legislative session and the 85th legislative session. So the MOU was, once again, is a memorandum of understanding. This is a first step in moving forward. There's a lot of details that are going to happen. We're working on a master plan with, with DPS, and, but this is, this tactical training facility would be state of the art, and it will be located on our existing gun range. We have a gun range over in Southmost, and it could, it, it needs some investment, and I know Brownsville PD is very excited about this possibility. And, you know, Representative Lucio is here, and I think he wants to say a couple of words about this project.
Bring, bring the soldiers to there. Welcome to the young and the younger.
As Mayor, Commissioners, it's an honor to be before you tonight. I feel when I bring my son, people are nicer to me. So he's my safety vest. But, but in all seriousness, I, today's a good day for the city of Brownsville. How this came about, in 2017, maybe even before then, there was some money appropriated for a firing range public safety facility in Hidalgo County in, I guess, coordination, cooperation with the city in that county. Unfortunately, they passed on the opportunity, but that money had already been appropriated. City officials and the lobbyists for the city of Brownsville came to us and said, hey, they want to spend this money in South Texas. There is no place right now in South Texas where DPS can do coordinated training. You should try to get it for your district. So we immediately started working on that, not only with the Appropriations Committee, but with DPS. It took a long time to coordinate this. The city of Brownsville, Ramito, various office with DPS, all worked really hard. The initial 3 million came from the appropriation, but there was another 2 million we were able to identify in unspent funds that will go towards this project. Our initial dream was to build a full-fledged DPS training facility like the one in Florence, Texas. This is the first step in that direction. In contact with the department, Police Department, they said, there's no need to reinvent the wheel. We have a foundation, we have a shooting range, let's work together on this instead of identifying a completely separate piece of property. So we, we've been, it's very rare, Commissioner, that we get specific monies out of the budget for a project like this, right? I mean, in, in the 12 years I've been in office, this has never happened. So I'm super excited that it's coming to South Texas, and I want to thank the city of Brownsville for that.
Thank you too, Eddie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I see that Brownsville PD, the firing range, and all these people that are wonderful.
Everybody giving us a thumbs up.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action item number 18, consideration in action to authorize an interlocal agreement between the city of Brownsville, Texas, and Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority to allow CCRMA to develop Indiana Avenue from 0.1 miles off to California Road to 0.62 miles north of FM 1419 Southmost Road.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. This project is an airport project related to the airport. This is going to be a realignment to make way for the expansion of the runway to the southeast of the airport. CCRMA has, they're better suited to take care of this project, given it's a state-maintained road. So we're basically just transferring the responsibility of the project to the CCRMA as a state road is being funded entirely by the state.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Action item number 19, consideration action on task order number two for the construction management services between Garver LLC and the city of Brownsville for the construction of new passenger terminal building.
This request is to award the construction management services, FAD services for the terminal construction.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Good work, and nice, nice celebration on Saturday.
Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Action item number 20, consideration action to authorize the city of Brownsville, Brownsville Metro to offer free bus rides on Friday, November 9, 2018, from 10:30 a.m. to 4 p.m. as recognition to the city passengers who use the Brownsville Metro's public transit services and to encourage residents of Brownsville to attend HEB's 26th Annual Holiday Dinner, the Feast of Sharing.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm RJ Garza for the record. Brownsville Metro is requesting authorization from the city commission for the city of Brownsville to offer free bus rides on Friday, November 9, 2018, from 10:30 a.m. to 4 p.m. as recognition to the city passengers who use Brownsville Metro's public transit services and to encourage, encourage residents of Brownsville to attend HEB's 26th Annual Holiday Dinner, Feast of Sharing. All fixed route attendees will be, wishing to attend the event, will be dropped off at La Plaza, Brownsville Terminal. All paratransit attendees wishing to attend the event will need to be dropped off at the Jacob Brown Event Center. Brownsville Metro staff is recommending your approval. This is an annual...
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.[1733.87]